Everybody stand, we're gonna have prayer and then we'll set the pledge of allegiance. I'm gonna ask Alderman Betts to lead us in our prayer. Is he here? I'm gonna ask our clerk if he would give us a roll call.
Now, the Board of Alderman Rokoff, a regular meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen, dated August 13th, 2019. Alderman Betts?
Present.
Alderman Dorey?
Present.
Alderman Gardner?
Here.
Alderman McCoey?
Present.
Alderman Probst?
Here.
Mayor, let the record show that the Board of Aldermen is present.
Okay. All right, before you have your minutes from the previous two meetings that we have, we had a special meeting amended our budget and also had a regular meeting. Is there any questions on those minutes?
On the minutes for the regular meeting, on Agenda Item 8, the Board approval for new hire for Vadaia Police Department, the minutes reflect that the Board unanimously carried the hire approval of the hire. That is incorrect. I voted nay.
Okay, counsel, was that so noted?
So noted. We'll make the vote.
Any other questions? You want to have a motion to adopt those minutes with that correction made?
Yes, please, so move.
Okay.
I second.
Motion by Alderman Dorey and second by Alderman McCoy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, our CPA?
Both minutes, right.
Yes, approval of both minutes with the one correction.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna refer to our CPA, Mr. Deborah Moe, for our financial statement.
The financials for tonight's meeting have all been distributed to the Aldermen and the department heads. They include the balance sheet as of June 30th, 2019, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the 12 months ending June 30th, a budget to actual comparison by fund, and a detailed budget to actual comparison by department. The balance sheet is a statement of our assets, liabilities, and fund balances as of a particular point in time. The balance sheet indicates that our cash is at 5.1 million, investments are 3.8 million, total assets are 33.1 million, total liabilities are 5.2 million, and the fund balance, combined fund balance is 27.9 million. The statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance for the 12 months ending June 30th, 2019 is a statement of the revenues, expenses, capital outlay, and other financing sources and uses over a period of time. The combined revenues are 42.1 million, total expenditures are 37.1 million, for a change in net position of 4.9 million. These financial statements represent the position of the town at the end of the 2018-19 fiscal year. Overall, the town exceeded its budget by $1,087,963. The high water on the Mississippi River caused much of the variance in the budget. The completion of the port did not happen as projected, and the floodwater prevention costs, both direct and indirect, have had an effect on the outcome. Also, the construction projects affecting the sewer and streets did not happen as expected due to the high water levels. Much of the change in the net position is due to the sale of the industrial park property for $4 million earlier in the fiscal year, offset by the payoff of the operating debt of $2.5 million. The hydro royalty fund increased the fund balance by $2.2 million. The sales tax fund had a $911,000 surplus. The convention center showed a deficit of $85,000, while the utility fund showed a $6,000 surplus. So that concludes...
Thank you. Any questions from the Aldermen? Any questions? Okay, thank you, Deborah.
I have one.
Okay.
You said that the department head for addition to the capital debt, is it copy available to the general public?
It's available upon request. We can give it to you. It's available upon request.
Upon request.
I think, yeah, that's...
I didn't quite understand what it is.
The financial statements.
Sure. You need those?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I'll give you this one after the meeting, okay? I can have that one. Okay, thank you. All right, now, Agenda Number 2, we've got occupational license applications. We have this Tasha Lachey miner, is she here? She's not. She has a business that's gonna be called Unique. Unique's sip and sketch. It's kind of a arts and craft, I think it says, painting with a twist. So, is there any questions on that? We do not have a signed application on that, so...
Is this gonna be an in-home business?
Showing secondary...
No, 103 Carter.
It's showing caristry, so they haven't submitted a signed application yet. Jade, did they not...
She said, right now, she's gonna look, you can't put one outside where it's located. That's right, close to the old power station lot.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But she's looking at maybe putting one on the top of the building maybe, but she hasn't come up with...
Is that's where the blast tech office was?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion made by Alderman Dorey, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gardner, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, number 2, we've got, this is a home-based business, it's called Vadaia Laser Engraving Service, and I think the principal is gonna be Eddie White, and that's gonna be on 917 Martin Luther King Avenue. Is Mr. White here tonight? Hey, you wanna tell us a little bit about your business? Mr. White?
Yes. What we'll be doing is laser engraving with CO2 laser, and if we need intricate items, small items, we can do signage up to two feet tall letters, and we'll cut acrylic and wood, and also do leather and etch glass with the laser. So we'll be primarily targeting the businesses and the state fair to try and miss business that will then be posted.
Okay.
And we're not gonna negate the tax side, so we'll find some retail as well just in case.
Okay. Any questions from the Aldermen?
Were you made aware that by having a business out of your home, that you would qualify for commercial rates on all utilities?
No, I was not aware.
Okay.
You can contact our office, we go over that difference in cost for you. Okay. All right, hear a motion?
I'll move.
Motion made by Alderman McCoy, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by, I think it's a tie?
Let him have.
Doesn't matter.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Number 4 on our agenda is the public hearing on an ordinance adopting and enacting the Policies and Procedures Manual for the Town of Vadaia, Louisiana. Do I hear a motion? We go into public hearing for that.
I'll move.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, here a second, by Alderman McCoy?
Yeah, that way.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're now in public meeting. Any questions on the ordinance adopting the Policies and Procedures Manual? Any questions?
Yes, everybody, on the...
Was it ready?
We're in public comment? Yeah.
My thing was, was taxpayers' money being spent out of state. As far as, right here on page 12, said all that Louisiana Public Bid Law does not require services to be bided or competitive at experience, sure that fees, pay for service, or cost of business. Therefore, management may use the dollar threshold contained in the public bid law as a guideline in contract for services. At least the ribbon on free telephone fax quotations or be attained for materials and supplies costing between $10,000 and $30,000. And bids should be attained for the purchase of a material supply that exceeds $30,000. As far as, just spending out of state, we always preach, you know, try to shop locally.
Amen.
In home town.
That's right.
Now, even if you ain't doing it in home town, at least you can do it in paper, much less going to Mississippi County and everybody. I have tried to demo some mowers and everything else, but I've done the city better than I've done any other city of Vadaia. Never could get a demo or anything well. Then I get this text, social media had a city of Vadaia line, two scags. I don't sell scag. If y'all like scag, I understand, I'm a dealer around here. I do sell steel products. It was seven trimmers, four rollers, and so forth. So, I sell steel, I'm a hardware and repairer, I sell steel, y'all agree with me? Thank you, I sell steel. Then, yeah, they asked for one, or any. Last year, something that I ate first, one of y'all's eggs went to Grandma's house. It was locked up. Just the engine alone was $3,316.45. I like it long enough to, it don't matter if you opened it up, it tells you what's on. Colder wouldn't matter. Being that I was just wanting to get a good relationship with the city and everything I say is still in my mind. Like I said, don't want that scag, leash it and then put it on Facebook and blast it out in front of everybody.
Well, you're exactly right, we should do that, but there are times when there's, if the product's not available, we do go where it's closest, where it can be serviced. In this particular case, we did have some funds that were available for those, and we, that was the brand that they wanted on that, and that's the reason why we did go to Adams County on that particular purchase. And since it was dealing with the grant, we gotta turn in one invoice that's gonna match those dollars to do that, because we, the town has done a large volume of business with your business, we're gonna continue to do that.
Yes, sir, I appreciate it.
And we're gonna continue to do that, and I promise you, on future things, we would love for you to be, you know, service, you know, anything you can, it's just unfortunate. For example, I know that our recreation department likes the John Deere equipment, you know, so that went, of course, not, went out of town, it went, you know, over to stealing Concordia Parish.
Yes, sir.
But that's the reason why. It just depends on what the product is and what we need it for, and the preference of the users that's using it, you know, and this is unfortunate, I'm sorry about that. I mean, but, you know, we'll certainly, you know, there's, it's just the serviceability and the reliability of those mowers, they're gonna be in an important spot on our, they're gonna be put on our riverfront, it's got a lot of responsibility to keep up if they do a great job on...
What trouble have we had out of X mark?
Pardon?
What troubles have y'all had out of the X mark?
Lee?
What's the question, Bob?
He said, what kind of issues do we have out of the X marks?
We have some issues with, we had one of the motors with something wrong with it that it goes up in the shop. I think we bought last year two from you?
You didn't buy any from me last year?
No, the year before last?
I believe so, yes, sir. But that's just what I just stated right there, it was ran without oil, it wasn't X mark's fault nor Colder's. Neither one of them stood behind it, I'm the one that stood behind it and ate the $3,316.
And we appreciate that, and then what do you go on?
Can I make a comment?
Pardon?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
What'd you say about the steel blowers?
I sell steel.
Did they buy steel blowers?
No.
They didn't? You just make it a point?
Yes, sir, they bought steel equipment, it wasn't from me.
That's what I'm saying, so why wouldn't we have bought that from you?
I just explained why, because this was grant money, and we had to turn it in on the invoice, and it had to match up to a certain amount from the invoice. For example, we had, they didn't give us a full amount of our grant, so we had to buy that equipment from that invoice attorney to get reimbursed, that's why.
You couldn't have matched two invoices?
What?
You couldn't have put two invoices together and make it come to the grant?
I don't know, but that's what they said we had to do, so that's why we did it like that.
My question...
You know, I preach the part about buying locally, so let's try to do that in the future.
Hey, I agree with you, this is taking it from a huge sense, where we got, you know, two different brand mowers, I wish he would've had them, because he would've made those sales, and that's the truth.
The tax dollars go to Vadaia and to Concordia Parish.
Mm-hmm.
That's what we need.
What was the total cost of the equipment that was purchased?
I weren't saying, the other one was $15.6, yeah, $15.6.
So he does bring up a good point, is, shouldn't that have come up for bids?
That was under state contract. The, we did get bids, I mean Alexandra, we, I mean, huh, yeah, we got quotes, we got the written quotes from Alexandra, they carry, that's the closest one that carries the scag. And I'm sure you got one or two others, but this was the best deal, and they did honor the state contract.
Got you.
So...
The thing that's most disconcerting about what he said, he said he ate $3,000, so...
I wasn't aware of that.
Were you saying that just to make a point, or are you saying that's outstanding bill?
Well, no, sir, I was just saying, you know, that I was trying to get a good relationship with the city and keep it that way, and try to service y'all as quick as I could anybody else, and just like I...
And we appreciate that, and we will, we'll continue to do that, and, you know, any other additional, we'll run it by you, see what we want, and just check what the users of it and what their preference is. I'd like, for example, I just know that rec department wants all John Deere equipment, and I, you know, they've had good service out of that, they've had it for, they've been using this equipment for eight years, nine years, so...
Yes.
Okay, all right, any other questions? On policy and procedure?
Make a motion, now we close the public hearing.
I have a question, but I do have a comment, though. We're dealing with a policy and procedure manual proposed today, and we're gonna vote on it. I read that manual, and it did a lot of, it spent a lot of work on what it was supposed to do, but it didn't identify specifically what it was gonna do. And I, one example, I made, the party who was responsible for handling money at various locations, that money would be handled, it mentioned that there should be a designated party doing their, and yet it doesn't identify by position who that party was. And I believe that that manual is a little bit short in doing what it's supposed to do, and it does reference a lot of times, here's what it's supposed to do, and yet it doesn't do it. And that's just what y'all commented, and I...
I appreciate that, but that is, this is a direct result of the legislative authority and what they recommend.
Well, I, my reading of it tells like perhaps you follow their instructions as to what it should do, and utilize their language in within the manual, rather than doing specifically what you should do.
Well, rather than getting into a long detail, it just depends, that's gonna be, you know, if somebody I tell to do, whether it's reconciling bank statements or verifying that, I could say Deborah do it, I could say one of our other accountants or bookkeepers could look over, you know, that leaves a discretion to me to make sure those controls are handled, so...
I'm saying, in every case that you're talking about, we have designated certain people to build over, but that doesn't mean it's, it's not, never gonna be set in stone, it's gonna be written or something, but not this is the person, this is the position, this is the position, though, that can be, if it's a evolution, it can be changed. We have people who designate, two people listening to this, and they are in control. We could give you a scenario of how it is right now, and next year it may change for you, but we have implemented. Am I right, Doug?
That's correct.
It's been implemented. Well, my concern is, if I were an employee, and it's written in the policy manual that is written in that manner, then I don't necessarily know who that designated person is, that I should be doing and handling my duties, so...
Those people, those people know, those people know what their responsibilities are. Those people who have those designations know what their responsibilities are. We make sure of that.
Are those people identified? I mean, if they have private services come to you and pay...
Well, you can ask me who reconciled bank statements. It actually goes through two sets of eyes.
It pardon?
It goes through two sets of eyes. I mean, as far as, it's, yeah, I'll tell you, you can come by any time, and I'll go point to whoever you got a question on in this manual who's doing those particular responsibilities.
Well, I just like to know...
Okay, I'll be glad to show you, I mean, we'll, we can do that, no problem. Okay, any other question? I think Alderman McCoy was fixing to close the public hearing unless somebody else has some. Okay?
I think I made a motion that he put...
Okay, he made a motion, you make the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, now we have the Board consideration and adoption of the ordinance adopting and enacting the Policies and Procedures Manual for the Town of Vadaia. Is any question from the Aldermen? If so, do I hear a motion to adopt?
I'll move to adopt, there.
Move, Alderman McCoy, here a second.
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Betts, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right. Number 6, Board approval of right-of-way agreement between the Town of Vadaia and Energy, Louisiana, LLC for fiber optics installation at a substation. I'm gonna let Bobby, our IT director, tell you a little bit about that. This is only to give them, they're trying to run some fiber to their substation so they can monitor it better. Bobby, you wanna elaborate on that?
They're gonna replace a phone line with a piece of fiber optic cable to their portion of the substation, and they just need to make sure that they have easement from outside of the substation property into the, into the substation. They've already built their fiber along 84, they're in the process of building it down Logan Sewell now. Once they get to the end point there, then they just need the easement to get actually into the substation.
Okay, is any question from counsel? Okay, do I hear a motion with...
I'll make that motion.
Grant that right-of-way? Motion made by Alderman Betts, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gardner, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Number 7 on our agenda is the Board approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Vadaia and 7th Judicial District Court's, District Attorney's Office establishing the 7th Judicial District Attorney's Office as Vadaia's court prosecutor. And I see Mr. Brad Burgett in the office, good to have you, Brad.
Good to have you.
So, is any question done from counsel? Okay, do I hear a motion that we ratify that agreement?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts, do I hear a second?
I second it.
Okay, second made by Alderman McCoy, all in, okay, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I was providing a county of the Union, government agreement, trying to walk into the agenda tonight, the board meeting, so I had no chance to read and go over, so I may ask some further complications. Does it add?
Okay.
Has that not been agreed?
Okay. Any other questions? All right, all right, we'll put it to a vote, let's do roll call.
The motion for the Board is approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Vadaia and 7th Judicial District Attorney, Alderman Betts?
Yea.
Alderman Betts, yea. Alderman Dorey?
Nay.
Alderman Dorey, nay. Alderman Gardner?
Nay.
Alderman Gardner, nay. Alderman McCoy?
Yea.
Alderman McCoy, yea. Alderman Probst?
No.
Alderman Probst, nay. Mayor, the votes, yays are two, nays are three, the motion passed.
Okay. All right, we go to item Agenda Number 8, Board approval of new hire for Vadaia Police Department. Okay, any questions? Counsel? All right, do I hear a motion for approval?
I'll make your motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts, do I hear a second?
I second.
Second by Alderman McCoy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Both hires.
Both hires.
You...
Nay.
Four.
Four, okay.
Wait a minute.
All right, let's do roll call, just for clarification.
This motion is for Board approval of new hires for Vadaia Police Department. Are you gonna take these individually or together?
They're gonna do them together, I think that was far together, is that what y'all wanted to do?
Yeah, we can do together.
Alderman Betts?
Aye.
Alderman Betts, yea. Alderman Dorey?
Nay.
Alderman Dorey, nay. Alderman Gardner?
Yea.
Alderman Gardner, yea. Alderman McCoy?
Yes.
Alderman McCoy, yea. Alderman Probst?
Nay.
Alderman Probst, nay. Mayor, the votes are yays three, nays two, the motion passed.
Okay. All right. Number 9 is Board approval for removal of surplus town vehicles and equipment for various departments, and you have that list in front of you, and just for the public that know, it's gonna be a 2004 Taurus, mileage 136, we're gonna advertise that. The rec department has a Ztrack Zero Turn John Deere mower body, and two rusted-out garbage dumper, which they got out beside them junk, so I'm sure that's gonna probably be a trip to the scrapyard. And the police department has a 2006 Ford Crown Vic and a 2002 Ford Crown Vic, and Joey or Frankie, do y'all wanna give us a status report on those two?
Mayor, we have two vehicles that we use hard solid to keep our other Crown Vic running. Two of them need to go to the back, that's why we make work.
You know, like I said, we done robbed all the parts off of them, and they just, we got them at the range right now. One of them is the one that Ronnie Wedgeworth had. The motor and transmission's good, it is, but I think the airbags are low, we probably could save that car for parts, but the other two just need to go to the back man.
Okay, any questions from the Aldermen? Do y'all want to approve the removal of those vehicles and equipment?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Dorey, second by Alderman Gardner, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I got an update on our LEPA Number 1 unit, as y'all know, we are on 10.3% of the LEPA Number 1 unit, which is a natural gas fired turbine generating, power generating units in Morgan City. We're into our third year with it, it's been a strain on the town, and I don't have good news on it, it's, the turbine is down. There's been some issues with it from the get-go. It's, right now, on average, I think the first two years we was in office, it averaged $84,000 a month with debt service and operating expenses on that unit. It's down now for the next six months to, it's gonna probably average somewhere around $103,000 a month to maintain debt service, and also the cost associated with keeping it, like keeping it moving toward getting it either fixed or some kind of resolution. We've been having meetings, well, we've been having engineers, attorneys, and everybody else to investigate this, and we're trying to establish a good, a good outcome for this the best we can. But right now, there's not anything good with that, other than it's down, and the, right now, the cheapest cost to fix it's gonna be around five and a half million, which we would have 10% of that, 10.3. And GE, who we're negotiating with, would offer a replacement, which is a refurb of around $7 million. And again, this is just for information, it's not for anything other than, I mean, going into an elaborate deal, because we're in the process of seeing if there's any kind of thing we can litigate. We've turned it into, LEPA's turned it into our insurance company with LEPA, to see if we can get some help there, and so we're gonna exhaust all of our issues and things that we can to try to resolve this issue. But I just wanted to put that out there and put it on the table so everybody can start. Keep you informed. Yes, ma'am?
Are we talking to other parishes that are involved in this, where we don't talk?
There's...
Like you said, you're talking to lawyers, I'm just curious if there was a strength in numbers of all the parishes?
What you have, you have your people who are participants in this, and it's the Town of, City of Rain, Plackamas, Vadaia, Homa, and Jonesville's got a little piece. Those towns are the ones that's in negotiation with all these different ones.
Will it have an immediate effect on the electric bills, so that folks can prepare as we're coming up on the hottest?
That bill, like I said, has been averaging $84,000. It will be, it will have a little impact on the power cost adjustment, because that expense is part of the power cost adjustment. So, we have seen bills as high as $110, $115, but this, while it's down, is gonna average around $103,000 a month. And again, this is just for information. Anybody locally that wants to sit down at length and discuss this thing, I'll be glad to show you the documentation we can, but pending any kind of litigation, if LEPA's gonna, if they were to go against, you know, GE or whoever it might be, we couldn't discuss that, but, because it could involve litigation, so... With that, that's my report on that, that concludes our agenda, do I hear a motion adjourned?